To order, please let our minutes show that all of council is in attendance with the exception of councillor Patterson. He may show up here in a bit, but we will proceed until he arrives. We'll just keep going. No members of media this evening. We have members of our staff in this evening. We do have a guest in a council chambers this evening who would like to ask a couple of questions of council. We could amend the agenda if council is okay with that, to add him to the agenda for this evening.
She thought.
I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said Jeff.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Do we accept the agenda as amended?
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it, yeah.
Motion to accept the amended agenda has been put forward, moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried, so we will get to it in a minute, okay? And so any conflict of interest? Oh, sorry, we will move on to the minutes of our prior meeting.
Councillor Smith will move to approve the minutes of the prior meeting. I'll second it.
Motion to accept those minutes. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Any conflict of interest for this evening? Okay, move on.
Um, others to, for the two minutes?
Two minutes, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. Sorry. It was also for the special meeting, if someone could take that.
Councillor Smith will move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting. Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded to accept the minutes for our special meeting of April twenty ninth. Any question on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Thank you for seeing your stuff and for bringing that to my attention. So again, no conflict of interest. And so at this point, should we let our guest bring forth his questions? So we have with us Jonathan Dickinson, and you're welcome to stand Jonathan, your just counsel if you'd like.
So we come here, which is one of the, they want us to give the direction, but in regards to growing our own property, like in, like, we have neighbors that is right up against our heads, so we smell something altogether. It's kind of a nuisance, a nuisance by law. Under that, nothing to do with it.
Well, the provincial laws, aren't they? Or are they?
Yeah. Like, the only provincial, provincial law board is having clothes locked in a meter and a half, like cage around it, but it's nothing for smell or anything. They had decided kids.
Even in the growing stage of it?
Even in the growing stage.
It's actually federal, not provincial.
Okay.
It's federal.
Okay, so have you looked into what the, as far as the growing and the proximity of other properties, have you?
There's nothing, there's nothing federal or provincial. Like, as long as each family has four plants. Property.
Mm-hmm.
All that property.
Okay.
As all states, it's nothing about proximity towards other dwelling, there's nothing than that.
Have you talked to them?
I never talk to myself. I wouldn't start there.
It says right here on the website, "You must follow all relevant provincial, territorial and municipal laws, including local bylaws about zoning, fire safety, electrical inspection requirements and remediation requirements."
So, if our CMP office is moving in there, would he have the authority to? I'm asking, I don't know.
To remove?
Not if not, these are within the limits. Now, what the subsection would be on remediation and things of that nature, that would have to be investigated with somebody, a federal representative would know that law.
But if it's that same, it has to be in accordance with municipal bylaws, is that correct?
Provincial or municipal, it has to, it's not withstanding. So there, there may be other jurisdictions that have something to say. I don't know that we have a bylaw that covers this specifically.
Well, but there would be is included in our bylaw, how closely you can plant things to another property line with debris within our bylaw?
Well, you can't do anything that infringes on your neighbor's property, I know that. I mean, there's a lot of trees that are, there are property markers that fall around somebody's property.
It also says here, "Ask your local government about the specific regulations on growing cannabis to ensure you're compliant." So I think they're kind of leaving it up to each municipal way that sounds, I guess.
Could we, could, could we get you to look into it, find out what they are and bring it back to council?
For the great job to Jonathan.
You can act on it?
Can you leave us your contact information, Jonathan?
I know this is not completely related, but recently I had a request from a resident that a neighbor's tree was infringing, dropping debris and causing some trouble. And I reached out to the service commission, they said it was five feet from the line, and that he couldn't do anything to the neighbor's tree, but he could cut or drive anything that was over his property. But I don't know, that's what we did.
The plant was great.
Similar type.
And like, we still, or like, not even by big problem on the other side of the fence. So it was, I guess, just to hinder his task.
You could swim and get hurt at the same time.
So, uh, our CEO will look into that for you, if she can find out any other information aside from what you've investigated yourself. Either way, you can contact Jonathan, won't you?
How well do you know your neighbor?
What's that?
How well do you know your neighbor?
I don't know, I know one pretty well, two pretty well.
Would it, would it be, would you be able to have a conversation where they might respect distance? Like, that might be the healthier approach. Yes.
Could they put them somewhere as?
Yeah, they could put them closer to their heights instead of the regular ones.
Make sense.
That's probably the best course of action, is to follow up and have a great, obviously, have a great thing go over them first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're still pointing there with the.
Okay, well, that's more or less, I just got here because I didn't know if they're getting I didn't know if there's any bylaws or anything, because it's all new, like that's growing with new.
Right.
You could check it through the municipality, since there's, getting jurisdiction set could help address this.
Well, we'll have our CEO get back to Jonathan.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, thank you so much for bringing concern to us, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. If there isn't a bylaw there, there's, there's going to be.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to say that with what was on the website that councillor Walton pulled up, there was some great information about, you know, things such as you can't grow it, like federally, you can't grow it around a fence that where there are children, school, laying schools, playgrounds, daycare centers, public spaces frequented by minors, what it says. And the idea behind that would be the entitlement piece that.
That's the stuff you're looking at.
It's the same way that a pool or any of those things, draw a hormon or attraction, yeah, there's, there's parameters. So, you know, in a residential area and you're raising children, you know, there would be the concern for.
I didn't know with growing plants.
You want to have it as done so to your home as possible.
Right.
With respect to your neighbors, it's lifestyle choice, they don't want to infringe lifestyle on your neighbors' homes.
And the tree piece that you raised, that was raised by a neighbor of mine some time ago, and certainly there was something that occurred, right? And, and it was, it was, it was, you know, as trees grow and mature, of course, you're walking shade, or sun, or you're overpowering or overpowering other growing gardens and things. So, you know, it becomes a matter of respect. I have a big point of information here. So I checked in the Brunswick law, and it says New Brunswickers can grow up to four plants on their own property for their personal use. When grown indoors, these plants must be in a separate loft space. When grown outdoors, they must be located behind a locked enclosure that is at least one point five two meters high. So they're supposed to be locked up in a locked enclosure while, while they're grown, while they're growing.
Yeah.
So that's provincial, that's the provincial one.
So I will definitely reach out, chance to get to the, you know, the. Okay, thank you. Okay, welcome councillor Patterson.
Sure.
That's okay, glad to have you here. We will move on to item six correspondence, and six point one is an email from the Central Craft Nursery. Have you been included in our package? So, did you want to address all?
Yep, um, so they just, they enjoyed George and the other, that ran, Stephanie, when they went to visit and talked about things. So we've had the nursing home reach out, we had to these directors, many residents would like to have a council come regularly to give them updates on what's happening in the town. I suggested, instead of one person taking this on, you know, everybody could take a turn so that you really only have to go once. If anyone was interested in ours, I would go once or twice or something.
You could do off a schedule. And those designated, do they have a specific time in your list to meet it?
Well, she did send, she did send for June, I don't know, they have spec, the sixteenth, the fifteenth, the twenty seventh, and usually around two P M. So, I mean, we could.
Are those on Fridays?
I think I don't know, leave on, it's too far, I haven't, yeah, like their schedule.
But she would probably work with us on days, but, yeah.
I think it's a great idea, especially good instinct in knowing what's going on with us, because we know a lot of people are, so, you know, for those who are.
Well, they did say that they have.
Very receptive on top of it, it was, I really enjoyed the experience.
Where did you go?
I went just over for a while as campaigning, I think about a week prior to the election. And it was, I really, really enjoyed the experience. It was, it was great, great interactions, lots of conversations. Uh, yeah, went over to the girl and play swinging and spoke for those people as well, and, yeah, it was, it was great. They usually, they usually bring people over if they have something going on. They'll, everybody from Carlton, they'll all meet over in the big sunroom over at the.
Maybe it's a good time to start a program before I get there. I ended up bowling.
They graciously accepted me.
You said maybe you could move in and just make that roll on?
Yeah.
As long as you pay me five hundred dollars.
Play your cards right, Wayne, you might get a free supper out of it.
Did I come off to five hundred dollars?
So it sounds like we're interested in taking part?
Absolutely.
By all means, folks, we're speaking trains, they, that's great.
That sounds great.
I'd do it anytime, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I wish we could have more, you know, correspondence like that. I really do, that's nice. Uh, item six two, emails from Black and McDonald's, I'm going to leave this with you as well.
Yep, I just attached that for everyone's reference, so we did get some written confirmation that on any existing identified issues that those can, regardless of expiration of warranty, that they will support us.
Takes the resolution.
Yes, yeah.
So we've got something in writing now.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Do it.
And we'll move on to our council reports. For me, I attended all the regularly scheduled meetings and special meetings that we had on April twenty third. I had an opportunity along with our CAO, members of staff, to meet with some members of the Western Valley Panthers team, who has expressed an interest in moving their team to Hartland. Uh, so we chatted to the tour. And since that evening, members of staff have again met with members of the administration with the Western Valley Panthers, and it looks like we have an extra team coming to Hartland. So, uh, we want to welcome the G U C Western Valley Panthers to Hartland. So glad to have them here.
Tremendous. Here we are, Chief Walter, we're big crowds.
Yeah, yeah.
I think our community will welcome them back with open arms.
I agree, I agree, and they're, they're really looking forward to it. I understand that they, the team go up last week, is that right? I think the team went up and took a tour. Okay.
Yeah.
And they have said that their team, anything that's going on, like in the community with kids, if you let them know, they'll, you know, their team will support and help out or.
It's a really well-run program that they run there.
And they're very enthusiastic and they're, they're excited to, to get back to Hartland, so.
And would there be a consideration of addressing them, being identified specifically for them with their logo and all that, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, they, they gave us a list of their requests, and, you know, I believe that we countered with them and, and worked, worked out arrangements, yeah. Oh, that's great news. And then on last Thursday, I attended a zone meeting in regards to UNMB and in Naperville, and I was seeing a really long meeting, we heard some updates of some of the things that are going on with UNMB in regard to provincial legislation and all of that sort of thing. So, a few things that are on our radar in regard to the freeze on, oh my goodness, tax assessments, which will affect us financially. So a few other things that, that were brought to light, we're going to bring a little more light to that with the Treasury Department and that sort of thing, just to see how it will directly affect us and what sort of numbers we're looking at. So that was it for me, thank you for that.
Thank you, Your Worship. Like yourself, I've attended all regular scheduled meetings, starting with the Finance and Infrastructure Committee meeting of April fifteenth. Minutes are in your package to refer to that. Um, some of the items, uh, will be addressed when we review our strategic plan, there may be block, block for that record in addition. Also, attendance in special meetings on April twenty ninth, and we have an upcoming uh, Finance and Infrastructure meeting scheduled for next Wednesday at two P M.
Thank you. Councillor Britain?
Likewise, Your Worship, I've attended all regular council meetings, special meetings. Also, in the last couple of weeks, I've attended two cemetery meetings for Grumner Cemetery. And we've, we're going to have May the twenty fourth, a cleanup day, if anyone would care to join us for the shovel and rake. Uh, that's all I have to report, Your Worship.
What was the date of that, Wayne?
May, Serry, May the twenty fourth.
That's the day we're having our special meeting here in the morning.
Is it in the afternoon?
It's basically all day.
All day?
Yeah.
Okay. And councillor Patterson?
Well, like councillor Britain, we've made a very, we've attended all regular and special meetings since we last discussed. One thing I want to bring up, I had a private meeting with a local citizen, I mean, it's still concerned with the A T V slash, I can't even say their main streets. And their proposal to me was maybe some clarity, guidance on just exactly what is acceptable, isn't acceptable. Uh, they brought up the fact that maybe in some communities, they don't allow any A T V vehicles on the trails or on the roads, or other do, have designated roads. This individuals, this hasn't been here a long time, and said that there's some confusion maybe with citizens of less legally allowed, or less not legally allowed. And why are we trying to get, you know, it's not that they don't want them here to support our commerce, but it just seems like there's a wild acceptance of wherever they want to know they go. So for instance, if there is an allowance to have them on the walking trail in a, in a safe fashion, and are we promoting that? Or are we guiding them up our main streets? Um, so I think there, there maybe has to be, I don't, bulletin would be the way to word this, but I don't think people understand what they're supposed to do, pass through our town, maybe even to get to the scattered and strays. I don't think, um, so maybe that's something we could discuss at a later date, maybe make some clarity to.
That's my good.
I promise you, I didn't hire them to do that.
I saw, figure out, like, that, that's good timing.
Um, so for instance, if that young individual wanted to go up, how would they get there? What are we as a community recommending they leave from wherever they were, get to wherever they go? And maybe that's never been discussed.
I think, um, as in most cases, the onus is on the driver to figure out where they can, can't be. As far as within our town limits, we have no designated trails as far as, yeah. No designated trails within town, no designated streets that are legally accessible.
I realize that, but have we posted that, published that? I mean, this could be as simple as educating the people that they're not allowed to be able to, you know, because that's something we're promoting.
No, because.
All I'd like to say is, this is probably the seventh or eighth complaint that I've had in the last four weeks, and I know the Irish and Pinnos here, so we do not chase through the vehicles, but doing nothing maybe isn't the answer either. And, I mean, there are trails through the western part that they take, that maybe, you know, I'm just asking the question, does the down ridge stop somewhere, there are no trails? Does anyone know that where they actually stop, you know? Yeah.
Hasn't asked, it's opposed one time.
Okay. I mean, it will bring you right back into here, and there is a trail front, but on the hard of the scare, there's association, it's a mobile trail.
No, yeah, yeah, not fast, I can, you know.
Anyway. Just by bringing up, we can do what we choose, it is a concern, and it's, it's a it's a, it's a complaint of the laws, it's.
Sadly, if we do something, it's only going to punish the people that don't, aren't defenders anyway. The people that do that stuff are going to do it, whether we have by law or anything.
Well, well, I was gonna say, we've been analyzing this for about a year or so, and I know that in partnership with other communities, we were working on a strategy to come together with some consensus on what we would have. And, and John could give us an update at some point as to where that is still ongoing, more stagnant. But we know that we have a vested group of citizens who, who would like to see a piece protected. And, you know, we've, we've talked here about five plumbers, they would maybe be looking more at ten. We've talked about that balance, where to strike it, where you access trail, where you, you know, up above Brighton or, or in upper Brighton, and then down here below town. But the trails do exist, so if someone's knowledgeable about the skating trails and so on, there are lots of ways to get, you know, we're going out back, so to speak, or if we're headed to a destination in town, whether it's the complex. Um, I cannot recall what the school's stance is on bringing vehicles, altering vehicles to school. Okay, I didn't think so, because every school has their stand on that, but it has to be licensed and roadworthy and assured and so on and so forth. So, um, if we had an open piece with some stipulations around it, as you said, Lee, you know, is it the five plumbers on this main street, or is it, you know, what do we want for people? There has to be education, we've talked about that, getting something up to the school and doing a presentation, because it's probably mostly youth in that category, but we could have someone from eighteen to twenty-four running on a, a non-street legal motorcycle, so to speak, or an A T V. So those are in the works and have been for some time, but we have not released any information about it.
In certain communities, they have barriers that they put up to restrict or reduce the use of, you know, when this is certain areas, which in our case would distract them down in the road. You know, I mean, I, I know that. I don't think the business community with the commerce community does want to shut them out. But I think that maybe in one of our, our malestness, maybe we, you know, if we had a little blurb in there of what's, what's acceptable, but maybe talking about how, you know, it's a nuisance and.
Proper etiquette.
And maybe, yeah, proper etiquette. Maybe, and whether it works or whether it doesn't, but I think that of the community members that, that are asking, it would certainly be a step in the right direction that we're trying to.
And the way you're discussing, Lee, is information, not enforcement. Like, we know that enforcement's a difficult proposition, but at least information, we can say that, hey, we have this etiquette, we'd like you to follow if you want.
Sometimes if people read, read that people are watching, they're less brash or ready, if you're reading.
The agenda's being posted, yeah.
Would it be possible to have, you know, an interview with someone on the local radio station where the target audience is likely to be listening, right? I don't know that it's C B C, but certainly we have a local radio station, and, you know, would one of us want to be designated to speak at within some classrooms, or, you know, send something to the community school to educate the kids, right? Those are, you know, all part of citizenship pieces, right?
Yeah, I don't think solutions easily found, but I mean, maybe starters.
At least if we have, like, if we have something in our newsletter, it shows that we're actually trying to do something, instead of, you know, just bringing it here and talking about it. At least we put it in our newsletter, they know that we're talking about it, and we'd like to see people take alternate routes or whatever we come up with, but that's actually a street or bike, but I don't think it's just a town problem either. I mean, I have people that go by my house in the Rock and Roll on their back tire twenty times a day.
You said, what the tower, bro?
Yeah.
The gentleman who I spoke to said something that was intriguing, he said, "I have no issue with anyone using the road or the trail to get to the destination. The issue I have is when they're using the road and the trail as their destination."
Exactly, yes, that makes.
The rest way to do it. Like, when they're going up and down the road, they're up and down the trail, up and down the trail, up and down the road, instead of just going up, you know?
Using the tra, the trail where they were to access a, a more appropriate place to go, I think.
As a true means of transportation, not entertainment.
Because what's going to happen if, if more will complain, more will complain, they'll have no choice but to, to put barriers up on the, on the road beds. And, I mean, right now, it'd be really simple, if you just close that bridge off, they're probably, they're working on it, they wouldn't be able to cross it, but that's not what we want, because then it cuts down the money they're spending in our community. We don't want to have a god, we're just saying that the.
Community, if they're going across to cover the bridge right now.
Yes, and dirt bikes and things, but I'm saying, there's, there's that, we don't want to do that. We'd like to, we hope they have respect and keep it the way it is. We have a very lax, lax rule here. I mean, you go to Forestville, Bristol, and they have barriers within the town limits.
They do.
We're stuck as barriers on the walking trail from the town limits, you know? That's not something we, we don't need to be there, but if they don't want to respect what we have here, then, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at, I don't know.
Thank you for that. Councillor Smith?
Well, I've attended all regular meetings and special council meetings, I was not able to attend the finance infrastructure meeting last month, but will be this, this month, and that's really all I have to report.
Thank you. Councillor Walton?
Well, like everybody, I was able to attend the all meetings, except for the special meeting, I was sick, so they probably did last meeting, but I'd like to welcome George to table again, for a second, go at it, you're going to be a great addition. Um, I did, was able to attend the finance infrastructure meeting last month, and I will be again next week, and that's everything to make.
It has to be.
Yeah. Been busy orientating myself to norms and rules and the way at the table and getting up to speed on the agendas that are at hand and the, the things that are in motion at this point in time. I'd like to thank everyone for a warm welcome and their correspondence, their confidence and the welcoming at the table, so.
We are pleased to have you.
You know what to expect, George.
I'm good.
Uh, item eight is special reports, there are none. Item nine, this is from a prayer meeting, so nine one is in regards to bylaw number A dash zero two eight, procedural bylaw amendments. So we have had two readings of the bylaw amendment, which means we could have our third reading tonight, if cancelled. So, which was?
Nothing has changed since we discussed it last, correct?
Yeah, right.
Councillor Smith will move to an act by third reading, the title of bylaw number A dash zero two eight dot zero two procedural bylaw for the council of Hartland.
Councillor Patterson will second that.
Motion passed by move and seconded in regard to the third reading. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Right, so that means now that a great other Tuesday, the second and fourth Tuesday, the most legal, have regular plans in place. That's going to create a lot of time, I believe. Item nine two, amended Rockland Road preconstruction grant application. And so we're assumed, uh, Mr.
Mayor of council. So we're looking at the amended Rockland Road preconstruction grant application. Uh, the Regional Development Corporation, or R D C, received our water and our wastewater applications requesting seventy-five percent funding for a two hundred and seventy-five thousand. For a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar preconstruction project. So council had previously approved that. That was submitted. Uh, and then RDC came back and asked us to resubmit our application to reduce the scope. For a phase one project in the sixty thousand dollar range at thirty-three point three percent to forty percent. Um, and that would be provincial funding. And then after that, we could submit a phase two that would be the balance. Of that two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, plus the actual construction part of that project. And that part would all be at eighty-three point three percent. So they're asking us to split it up. They think it might be an easier one to approve and get moving faster if we made it a little bit smaller. Uh, it is, it is at a lower percent. Um, but overall, because we'd be getting eighty-three point three percent of the, the balance of it, it almost. It's almost a wash. Um, we probably will have a three thousand dollar extra if we use all of the contingency. That was built into the budget for those. Um. And so our civil engineers still consulting, they are recommending that the following items from the original application be used. So it would be a high level review of the existing sanitary lagoon lift station capacity. Um, that's already in the works, um, here because we needed that, uh, capacity confirmation letter. For a couple of rezoning applications that are pending for some, uh, multi-residential. So that is a nine thousand dollar project would include that in there. Um, the next part would be design and have contract ready documents for the installation of a curtain and aerator. At the existing sanitary sewer lagoon, um, and that would provide an immediate increase in capacity. We think that one's actually another quick project that can happen. And then the well two assessment, we do, there was a well two assessment in that initial application, you might remember, but it was a larger scope. So Dylan Consulting were suggesting we pull out just a piece of that, which would be, uh, to complete the well casing assessment. So they would remove the well pump and inspect the well, um, and potentially install a transducer to monitor water level. That would depend on perhaps that last part, uh, but that part of the project would be twenty-six thousand five hundred. For a total project cost of sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. So I am asking counsel if we would approve that amended application at the reduced funding level. There is a motion in your draft minutes, I believe.
Make a motion to approve the submission of the amended RDC preconstruction grant application for sixty-five thousand five hundred dollar project. At the request of forty percent support.
Counselor Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Just clarification, in the second part, you know, everything shipped down seven stars, uh, what's actually, um, driving. To do those projects for, for funding?
It'll probably be about a three thousand dollar difference when we did the math on it. Um, but again, those figures all included a buffer for a contingency amount. So the overall spend could be less and therefore that cost difference could be less. But yes, it is potentially an extra three thousand dollars. Um, but there really wasn't an option to get the seventy-five percent that we need.
So I have a question. So if we do all this at forty percent, are we guaranteed that phase two is going to be approved?
Phase two, so everybody's been asking the problems that, uh, the assumption is, and, and their feeling is. There will be no reason for them to approve the preconstruction if they weren't going to support the construction of it. So that's when they're looking at it, they are looking at that and they know that this is probably a. A big project, uh, that we, without having the preconstruction and the design and engineering work done, we really don't know where the issues. Could be for improvements and what the total dollar cost would be, but that will come to light. And that may also determine, once they do that work, they may say, okay, well, we thought maybe you'd need to do this, but now you don't need to. Because we found out enough information, you know, we, we really don't know what we don't know until they get to your work.
Just a final question. You had alluded to this being in the budget. All these are budgeted items?
These were, um, so our forty percent was budgeted, yes, because you had approved the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project. At seventy-five percent, so that twenty-five percent was budgeted, and this is well below what that number would have been.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Clarify, we got further, that reason is just being that we've talked about with our gas tax, once we know these elements of these. So I moved on seconded. If there are no further questions, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item nine three is review of this strategic plan, which was brought up earlier. So we have agreed to meet, um, Saturday, May twenty-fourth, from nine until twelve. So if there's a desire to follow that up and go to the cemetery, we can talk about that then, but. So everyone has that marked in their calendars. Uh, item nine four is a streetlight request for all right port and every, all the lights have been installed. And confirmation received from MB Power Project is complete. So that's done for that. Item ten, uh, going into new business. So council received two submissions for canteen operation RSP. High octane for everybody, grill and catering were selected and began operations made fit at the Dan Ross Community Center. And the pictures that they shown.
I've talked to people that've had it, and it's been all very good reviews. They, they gotta ban those cinnamon buns.
Is that good?
Holy. It's good.
So there is a motion here to ratify, um, the motion, if you did.
We need to amend it to eliminate the cinnamon bun problem.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Remand it to hot cross buns.
To ratify the selection of high octane BBQ, uh, barbecue and catering as the new canteen operators for the Dan Ross Community Center. At a monthly rate of two hundred a month in the summer, six hundred a month in the winter, uh, months for one year. Don't move.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
And you notice I didn't mention anything about the cinnamon bun in the motion.
Item ten two, Community Investment Fund, uh, Community Growth Application, again, Michelle.
So the Community Investment Fund, also known as SIP, um, has a community growth stream, which includes some beautification. So we prepared a beautification project to submit. It includes flowers, hanging baskets, replacing two decorative length posts. Uh, line painting at the library and tourist bureau parking lots, adding a hedge around the historic cemetery. Adding hedge by the pool and potentially replacing the welcome sign on the covered bridge. Uh, now that last one is something we had asked DTI previously. And the two previous superintendents, I believe, those are two titles. Uh, had both said that they'd work on it, but then lately we have been asked to submit a ticket on that. So we're not sure if DTI are still going to take care of it. So, uh, the recommendation would be to include that in our project. And if DTI does go ahead and complete that work, that would free up more money to add the flower and hanging baskets. So the total project budget would be twenty thousand dollars. And SIP would be asked to contribute fifteen thousand dollars. Their, uh, maximum for that is seventy-five percent. So that would be their maximum. And the town has budgeted five thousand dollars for beautification. So if approved, we would be able to expand on what was already budgeted.
I'll make a motion, motion to approve the application of the Community Investment Fund Community Growth Initiative stream for fifteen thousand dollars. Towards a twenty thousand dollars beautification project. Counselor Smith will second that.
Has been moved and seconded. Any questions?
You guys are gonna be putting all this stuff up, you and your crew? Right, that's right.
Well, it won't be my experience totally, uh, fair. The fear will, will be associated with that. I, I sort of, yeah.
The hedge would be, um, the Knowles Tale.
Knowles Larsen Learning Center.
I think it's related to them. I don't think it's a specific program, but they're doing different tree plantings.
The same group that did the complaining up at the, the, uh, community center last fall.
Any other questions? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item ten three was regarding municipal grant, actually, uh, municipal grant, help grant, excuse me, education grants. So, so council discussed monetary awards for the municipal twenty-five graduates. Uh, there is a motion there. I believe this is what we did last year. And so basically what this does, it provides, uh, two different, uh, grants, leadership of tomorrow. And this even student awards and then fifty dollars for each graduate. So each graduate has a prize from.
Mathematically, there's only thirty in the graduating class.
Yeah.
That's low, isn't it?
Lower, yes.
I moved to approve three thousand five hundred dollar education grant, which includes one thousand dollar, the year of tomorrow award. Two awards of five hundred dollar each for deserving student and fifty dollars for each graduate. So I will second that, Counselor Britton.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any questions, carry. Item ten four, Residential Development Grant Application. I would like to speak to this.
The mayor of the council. So we are in receipt of our first residential development grant. Uh, excited to, uh, have our four of us up on the clean. So this is under Brad Dickinson's name, and Brad has submitted his grant application for all four of his, uh. So for all four of his development parties. And he's admitted he uses, uh, many taxes as well. So he's followed all the rules that he meets. Uh, so it's linked is for thirty-seven and a half percent, which is what we have approved as a town council. So for his grant, it's forty-three hundred eighty-six hundred and forty-eight dollars. So this is his first year, and for the following four years, he will receive that same amount. Uh, from the town, he has to, uh, submit his paid taxes each year in order to, uh, be ready for the grant. So this is an amount that we did budget for twenty twenty-five and, uh, ready if you are. In accordance with the grant policy to, uh, put this through. So we're pretty excited with this, the first one.
Uh, and, and each one of those assessed at a hundred eighty thousand eight hundred?
That's correct.
Counselor Smith would move. That we approve a residential development grant for Brad Dickinson in the amount of four thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. For four consecutive years starting in twenty twenty-five for development on TIDs one zero two nine three one four zero. One zero two nine three one five seven, one zero two nine five two zero two, and one zero one zero seven one six seven.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions?
You say those numbers again, Jason? In one breath, yes.
Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item ten five is covered bridge events, municipal grant request, also has President Puffy's name attached to that.
Senior council, you did receive the grant application for bridge events. Uh, I'm sure all of you know what all, uh, that group does for the town, although it's a birthday holiday for sure. And, uh, they have asked for the same amount as last year. They did submit their, uh, revenue and expense from twenty twenty-four. And they have asked for five thousand dollars plus help from the town. Uh, like they always do, Jed and his team for sure, uh, during the three-day event. Uh, recommend, recommendation from the town, uh, CIO Stockford and I reviewed it. Uh, we reviewed where we are with our budget in that respect, and this is their tenth anniversary. So we had budgeted a little bit more for this year. Our recommendation was for fifty-five hundred dollars per year. In actual dollars, uh, for this event in celebration of their tenth anniversary.
Counselor Patterson, that's the way, the motion in additional verification of the covered bridge events, you know, fifty-five hundred dollars. For the date bridge, past expenses.
Counselor Smith will second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions in relation to that motion? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Thank you, Tina. Item ten six, receiving promotions, municipal grant request.
Well, this is for the scene for motions, um, they've requested. A thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to help them remote a music show. But originally, they said it would take place at the Legion of a Triple C, and since then, we've been advised, I guess, the application states it will be the fifteenth. Um, two days from now at the Triple C. He did provide a budget. Uh, and like we, um, President Puffy and I have discussed, we donated or, sorry, the grant was for six hundred dollars last year. Um, and we felt that we should have talked for the same.
I'll make a motion, oops, let me do. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the grant application with the scene promotion, the amount of six hundred dollars for the music show.
Have a second then?
Counselor Smith, seconded.
Motion has been moved, any question?
Question is, what was the original request?
For twelve fifty.
And, and you recommended a reduction?
We, well, we had given six last year, and when you look at his application, we, we would be covering the entire cost except for. Think what little bit he would make off of the tickets.
Thank you. And it's going to be up to the triple C?
Yes.
Going to be outdoors?
Yeah.
It's gonna be nice Thursday. Well, wondering more terrain, I think.
I think they're playing Creed of Clearwater. Have you ever seen the rain?
Sorry, was this an all ages show?
Yeah, it is an all ages show.
And I noticed there's gonna be, uh, three bands. Though it must still.
Any other question?
What's the amount again in the motion?
Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item ten seven, uh, the banking agreement, and we will talk on that especially once again.
So, um, while we've gone into, we, we did our review with our banking officers. And, uh, with the opening of the complex, um, some closing of some required banking facilities. So we have been working closely with our bankers to try to set us up for the future of Harden. As far as banking, interim borrowing, borrowing and for the long term. And when we actually sat down with our banking officer and said, okay, uh, these are the things. Uh, these are the things that we're thinking about. Can we accommodate these? We've worked also with, uh, community finance to make sure that we were on track. We went through our auditors, made sure we weren't breaking any rules. And, uh, we actually had, uh, Mayor DeMurchin sit with our banking officers, uh, Adeline Appleby at Scotia Bank. Uh, when we did the review. And one of the things that we wanted to do, because we're removing a six point six million dollar credit facility. That we had, that we never used for the building of the complex with one exception. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we did as additional borrowing last year, last fall. So we had had a facility for the nine ninety-eight, the eight hundred and forty-two thousand and the six point six million. So when we started thinking about it, we said, okay, so every time that we go for borrowing, we need a new credit facility? Well, all that does is it takes time and it takes amendments with our bank and constantly changing paperwork. So we said, there's gotta be a better way that we can set ourselves up for this six million dollars and, uh. That you're seeing on this capital budget line that we're trying to move to, showing you all of the projects. That are coming our way in the next two years and getting ourselves set up for that. So that it doesn't take months to get municipal capital borrowing board in line and Scotia Bank in line, our banking line. So the municipal capital borrowing board gives us the approval once you folks have given us the approval to do something. Uh, but then all of that is facilitated through our bank, all of that funding. So we have to have it ready. But when we talked to the banker, uh, we were talking, uh, two million dollars and the mayor actually spoke up and she said. I really think that we should go for the two and a half million dollars just based on what we have in the pot so far. And when you actually add up, um, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we currently have. We also have our fire truck for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We have a table. Application for interim financing for eight hundred and five thousand dollars, eight hundred fourteen hundred and six. For the Harlem waterfront project that is still in the works. Uh, we have just submitted for a backhoe, we've just submitted for interim financing and interim borrowing for Route one oh five. And we have all of these pre-construction and construction projects that we know are gonna come down the pipeline. And, uh, will require interim financing. So. Long story short, to save us from having to do, uh, what's called a credit facility amendment. Uh, every six months or three months, which banks don't like to see. What we're asking council to approve is a two and a half million dollar credit facility whereby. We have to have in order to use this facility. So this is protecting the town from the future, if, if I'm not the treasurer and Julie isn't the C A O. Uh. And the mayor isn't the mayor. Uh, basically.
George, you sure you wanted to get into this?
I'm listening.
Two, two things that are gonna set us up for protection from abuse. So number one, the bank has to see. A motion of council to approve the borrowing. And it has to see an actual approved borrowing from the Nashville Capital Boring Board. For the two and a half million dollar facility. The next two facilities that we added. Are ones that we don't expect ever to use, but we're allowed to have them in place. So one is for, uh. Four percent of our general operating line. So basically. If at the end of the year we were overdraft on our bank account, we could go up to four percent of our general operating. Knowing that that funding is coming in January and we would not be offside with any borrowing. But this is just to put that into place so that it's there in case, again, with council approval. Before any of that would ever be used. And we would have to prove that the funding was gonna be coming down the pipeline rather quickly in the new year.
If used, will we be penalized?
By the province? No, it's actually ruled by, by the bank. So this is just setting up a line. All of these facilities do come with interest, uh, when they're used. And we have a half percent of prime is what we're given for our rate. Uh, and the third new facility, of course, is exactly the same thing for our utility whereby we're allowed to have fifty percent. So those are where the numbers are coming from that have been put in front of you. Uh, so basically at the end of the day, we would continue to have our credit facility for our visa, which is a hundred thousand dollars. We would have our two and a half million dollars for, uh, our revolving term credit. To be able to use for our interim borrowings, our borrowings, everything funded through the municipal capital borrowing board. We would have a facility for one seventy-five, seven forty-five, which is, uh, the four percent of our general. And one for two thirty-six, zero point zero, which currently represents, um, the allowed percentage. For our utility operations and those are the lines that we would have. With that.
Do you have right now the, I was gonna ask that, the document that you need from the capital borrowing board for the bank? That you mentioned?
Well, like a sample of one that we had used. So for example, we received ministerial approval just recently for a hard.
Now you said, you, you said a minute ago that the bank required a motion from the council.
Right.
But they also require what from the capital borrowing board?
Ministerial approval.
Do you have that?
So we currently have ministerial approval, outstanding ministerial approvals for our, uh. Your inter fifty thousand dollars, that one's currently being debentured.
So you will have for the bank, what you require from the capital borrowing board? They have to have it from the capital borrowing board before the bank accounts.
That's right. So this is how we're protecting the town.
This is for all future.
Right.
Right. This is nothing to do with before, like this is starting tonight.
Other than the three fifty.
Other than three.
So out of what they, they call it a carve-out. So what they will do is carve out of the two and a half million, the three hundred and fifty. So basically at this point in time, uh, we would have two million, whatever, six hundred and fifty-two.
Two one fifty.
Yes, thank you. Anyway, uh, so that's where we currently stand, but it's, it's just a way to set our banking up. Uh, we're actually reducing our current six point six million down to this two point five. Is, is where we're actually at. We're adding in the two facilities that we're allowed to have as municipality. Every municipality is, is allowed to have it. We have no intentions of, of using it. But it is there in place in case there was something that should happen that we would need to have. A hundred thousand dollars to float us over into January when we got our check for funding. Like, um, an example is the complex for sure. When we first started in, your first claim in any project. Is the one that takes the longest to fund because they dot all their i's, cross all their t's, make sure everything is being done according to plan. So you get a little bit longer delays. Once you get into the process, the funds trickle pretty quickly.
So the second one, they don't cross all their t's.
No, some of them, uh, it's a lot, especially when we funded with complex through Scotia Bank, there's lawyers involved in the first one.
Financial finance, man.
It resolved, Council of Heartland authorized the capital bridge financing in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars be extended by Scotia Bank as a credit facility.
Gotta go whereas?
No, no, uh, we.
I didn't get to read the whole thing.
Well, there's supposed to be two motions. There are two separate motions. Sorry.
You gotta finish the first motion where, whereas section.
Well, that, that belongs to the second, be it resolved, that preamble. You don't think?
It's all one thing. Yes, do you have to read the lawyer's? Does he need to read this before he does?
There's two be, there's two be it resolves here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They'd read it all together.
I think it's just one motion. Cause I only see one here.
So we, we need all three to be, be approved. So the first one, two, and then this.
Well.
Do you not include the whereas paragraph in the first motion?
I, so says, yes, we do. I don't know what they give you to, to request.
Well, the where as affects the second be it resolved.
Yeah, this would. If they only want one motion, this is, well, it would be a motion. If they want two motions, then this would be one motion and this would be the second. But I don't.
There's, we, we sent these motions to them, be a result of Council of Heartland authorizes. And they approved. They said these are exactly what they're looking for.
And when in doubt, you can do two motions and say, yes, two might be a safer bet if you're not sure.
The question is, at what point, or do you read the, the whereas section one hundred point two?
Whereas this usually comes first and then it's be it resolved. Cause you're giving your reasons why and then you're saying.
Therefore, as part of the second.
So we're doing two. We're doing two motions?
Yes.
I can do that. All right. Whereas the municipality of Heartland uses capital bridge financing in the form of a revolving line of credit to finance capital's ventures temporarily until such time. As infrastructure and funding is received and or share of projects is borrowing long-term. Be it resolved, if Council of Heartland authorized capital bridge financing in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars to be extended by Scotia Bank as a credit facility.
Second.
I, I just look first.
I'm reading your files.
I'm still a bit confused before we go to the question. These are, these are separate motions or should they be all read together?
Separate, different.
I'm used to, once you come to be it resolved, you'd have a motion number, like this should have been duplicated up here.
Okay.
And then this being a second motion. That's what it looks like it should be to me.
Okay.
Um, and I think you'd be better off to break it up into, give it two, even if it was supposed to be one.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.
Whereas section one hundred point two of the Local Governance Act state that a local government shall not, in any one year borrowed for its current operations, any money in excess of a sum represented by four percent of the budget of that local government for that year. Or fifteen thousand, whichever is greater. The act further states that borrowing to finance utility fund operations is limited to fifty percent of the budgeted revenue for that year. Be it resolved that the Council of Heartland authorized Scotia Bank to add the following operating line of credit lines, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. To finance general fund operation and two hundred and thirty-six thousand and fifty dollars to finance utility fund operations.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any question on this?
Another question, just a comment.
Yeah.
We debated for days over our fire permit regulation. And we just passed. Think that's progress.
Progress.
Another question. If I, if I may. I recall you stating back last fall that two oh two sixty will be a very difficult year for the town of Heartland. We're now four and a half months in. What's it look like? In your opinion?
Well, you're ahead of us by one year.
Hey?
It's only two five right now.
Oh, you, no, two five is gonna be a difficult year, correct?
Twenty-six.
Okay.
For the town of Heartland for a huge spend years. Because of.
Because of, yeah. But how are things looking, uh, the? In line or learning?
Uh, so as I said, when I did the first quarter review last month. Um, at that point, our general was like ninety-eight thousand dollars in a surplus. And we need to repeat that three more times. So if we can repeat that three more times, we are on target for accomplishing everything that we want to do. If that answers your question at this point in time.
It does. I'm just, I'm selecting a little account for Fairbridge. We just deferred two and a half million dollars and it's scary.
This is what we were going to spend.
And I just have super.
Those two products, we need it.
Breathe, it's okay.
No signature on the jacket.
You know, I worry about my credit line of five hundred dollars, so.
So let me just tell you, I would never have suggested anything like that if I thought it was, we were just gonna go. To the back and step aside full money and take it home. This is. If it's necessary.
I am, I have very much faith in Tina's numbers and what she's doing. So if she says it's good, then I trust her.
We're protecting her future too. The requirements that have to be.
She made the comment that she might not be, she better be.
I mean, two, the other things, it's access to speed.
Yes.
It eliminates hurdles if you're eventually gonna spend the money regardless. You're gonna have it so you can make progress without being the hindrance and you know when your money's coming back around too.
And that was the conversation.
You wanna have the facility to start.
Well, it's great coming out of the nose a bit.
Any other question or comment regarding the motion? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Item ten eight, uh, cover bridge type barrier mockup and we think that our C A F.
So Doris couldn't make it this evening. She's had a party, but she would like to come to the next meeting and just do all of some things. So I would give everything she sent us. Uh, yeah, that's like, we absolutely invited the same. The metal that would be used with plastic around, I wonder. Um, the total built piece would be something three hundred and fifty pounds.
What's that for?
That's just a sample of what they would build it up.
That's what your mouth was.
So Craig kept it together, so.
The whole thing's gonna be a three hundred and fifty pound job.
Yes.
They're gonna provide the brackets to put it up.
Yep.
And is D T I approved? Is D T I approved just to put this on their structure?
Well, we're waiting for them to come back, but we've had verbal, um, confirmation from them in a meeting we had here one day that they would. They were okay with us doing and we just have to send it.
Is this on both sides, just the Heartland side?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good.
What's the dimension? How, what's the width for this? How is it gonna, you're just gonna be a little piece in the center of, you know, big beam or?
That's what it's all.
He sent, like, to give us an idea of size was how far.
It's gonna be very noticeable.
Yes.
And that's who they're going, if they're.
That's the one of them. She sent, they've sent us three or four different ideas that we could. So that is a photo that they did to give you an idea of what it looks like in front of the bridge. Uh, and then they also did one that was followed. To give us an idea.
And we're gonna be painting. We're gonna be painting the rest of the structure colored?
They're going, uh, D T I advised they would paint it black.
And they're gonna have reflectors on it and such?
They are.
So is this gonna interfere with the reflectors on top? It's gonna just sit on top?
Yes, and then reflecting as far as we know, going here on the actual beams themselves. We're going to confirm.
Even see on the model.
Craig's themselves are not gonna put this up. I don't, I don't think they're licensed, I don't think they're licensed to put stuff up.
No, right.
Right, we're gonna have to arrange either the town crew to put this up or we're gonna have to hire someone to do it.
Or D T I.
Yeah, well, and I think they're gonna do it. Okay, I see.
We'll work.
We may, we wanna have a hand and then we're their asset.
Thanks.
So all of the diagrams presented. There, there are variations of what would be carved out of the metal structure?
Yes.
Do we need to give it an approval to?
She just really wanted this to go in front of council so you could have a chance and look at it and review it. And then she said she would. She's always to be on the agenda for next.
So certainly, I think council had said they wanted to have some input on this. As. Is this the first time of seeing this?
She'll be here to answer questions next council meeting, perhaps.
It appears to be in this real place.
Yes.
What's there now?
Yeah.
Yeah, high standards here.
I could put something up.
I think the idea behind it, she said, kind of combining the. Oldness and new, um, because there's some that there's a worse than lagging and then this is supposed to be the longer than time.
Well, you know, each one of those things symbolize.
Yeah.
The fishermen, um.
Yes, yeah.
You know. Yeah.
And when when, uh, Doris is able to be here, she can give a deeper explanation as to what the symbolism of it is, yeah.
The, uh, way that it was done, we had our anniversary of the bridge a number of years ago. Was historically active and everything that she's depicted in her, uh, in her email certainly is.
Yes. Right. Yeah, any other question regarding, um?
I'm looking forward to something. Thing.
Move on to item ten nine is regional grant application heartland summer basketball program. Let's start my group. Your table please.
Right? So we will keep the start with the.
With the complex, we, uh, we have another lab to to guide me. Building and services to communicate where we'd like to start, other than all the current providers. Is the, uh, summer basketball program. So, uh, I'm heading in by. Through the, um, regional down programs through, uh, well, through dialing and. Uh, Charles Denver for, uh, funding for that. It's a hundred percent funding if we are successful. Um, religion, briefly speaking of the project, basketball plans. In the, uh, in the application and, uh, I can go through this year and, uh. And discuss that. So, um, the basketball relevant program, mutual program of municipal department. Heartland is, uh, lacking a city from accessible area for people to play around in October and summer months. Um, Harvard recognition is ending the launch of six to eight program, uh, for case H five eight and nine twelve. Uh, this program will focus on specifically two things per age group. Those means includes, uh, ball confidence, boxing agreement, core awareness and defensive base. It's still going to have to be endorsed with an appropriate environment for, for the athletes and free from the elements. Uh, the anticipated result of those programs which will be pursued above basketball beyond school year and encouraged for activity through summer months. Um, we have applied for. An amount of forty seven hundred dollars for that specific grant, two probably costs of additional basketball nets. Um, as you can see here, size five basketballs, size seven, and any additional training that we need with this program. And, uh, we have a attempt here with the program on paper and ready to go. It's the, uh, the trust board is not funded.
It's a great idea, Joe. All, all the other communities have basketball pro programs during the summer. Heartland doesn't.
And it will not only open up the door for the program, but it will also open up the door for open basketball and just open such that we can have. The nets on the floor and have the balls there and, uh, time to have a drop and things similar to what we do with other sports. What do you have for instructors? Uh, current staff, uh, why we probably asking for volunteers right there.
Oh.
There you go.
Would you take an old basketball coach?
Like anybody, if you got a coach, you take anyone. Yeah. We're gonna have, uh.
If he's good at, he could do that when he visits central club nursing.
Have your defensive stance and base and get down. With this.
One question I'd have, John, I, I'm maybe I'm, uh, the communities north and south. The organizers of those events, I believe, charge a fee from the students. Does this grant? Involve subsidizing the fees for kids or will the kids be charged a fee in addition to?
It will be charged in registration fee and send the application or any intended, um, revenue would be from.
Something similar to soccer though.
It would be very simple. Actually, it's identical to a football. Yep. If you guys to start a program, if you have the nominal, it'll be actually less than soccer. It'll be similar to a football program right now. I just to clarify too, I know the wording might be a little confusing with the, uh, what says size five, um, or says kits. It's not like jerseys and all that. It's it's basketballs and storage for those basketballs that are lowly wrapped. So we can easily move it back and forth.
And this will be done at our complex.
Right. Yep. So the anticipation is you would have four half courts ready to go for development. And then the four hundred fours could turn into two full courts depending on the use. That's the way I kind of have it drawn it.
And, um, painting the floors for all four of them?
Yeah, not full. No, it's not. We can do like a key in a box and.
So there's a motion for you.
Councilor Smith. Will ratify the application, make motion to ratify the application of forty seven hundred dollars to the Olympic sport and recreation program for basketball nets. Uh, and youth and adult basketball sets for recreation department. I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions? Hearing now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Item ten, active communities can program and some recreation expansion. John.
Hello. Uh, so you're just particular the same concept. Um, by through, uh, you know, and publicly developed. Uh, the application kind of says is the active community grant for that mist covers the expansion or inclusion of an existing project. So I took heartland summer recreation as an existing project. It's not a lone project. And we're in to expand on that project for the point twenty five and beyond. Because we have this facility, we have, uh, new man, higher demands. We want to expand on facilities offerings and recreation offerings as a whole. So I I don't find too targeted this which, uh, let's remove that. And I say in the description here, uh, the hopes of this project is to support the growth and participation we've seen. From the youth and our community, uh, participation has been seen from all of the data. There's ingredients in summer. And blocking other youth continue to have resources that encourage physical play and a fun time to be in. Uh, this program needs to expand on two essential areas of the, uh, apartment recreation, products and data. The equipment we have to use areas lacking in terms of quality and quantity and we wish to provide an order to use this summer. As for many less than registration increases due to us having, um, facility and now a construction site anymore. Um, we are anticipating increasing of, uh, so many registrations and we have increased our, um, maximum expert day cap as well. So, um, we're going to be happy these areas is lacking and, um. We require this traditional videos. Uh, an anticipated result is that we continue to offer what has made heartland summer recreation popular for years, but with an emphasis on expansion and innovation. I have this challenge here and kind of breakout of. The main focus, so it would be activity tables for the facility, day camp that are used. Um, additional sports balls, so, um, both. That can be used potentially at the pool and, um, summer day camp. Um, additional life jackets as we do see an increase in registration and any additional training in our first phase, we would need to accommodate, um. Our challenge.
When you say activity tables, what do you mean like ping pong tables, stuff like that? Are you talking like just regular tables for?
Suitable activity services for our front part. Students, our front part of our participants.
It's a craft and such.
Right, okay.
So there is a motion for you as well.
All move to ratify the application for four thousand dollars to the branch of sport and recreation program. For activity tables, sports balls, life jackets and staff training for recreation for the recreation department.
National brothers from the second one.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions?
Great. Thank you everybody.
Now, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion is carried. Again, my next meeting is in May twenty seventh. That's a regular council meeting. Um, and. Hi, it's six thirty here, ten fourteen minutes.
Uh, before we adjourn your worship, there's a time and year where. Uh, people are focusing on the condition of their street and roads. I know I've had a number of falls, uh, on it and. Birmingham. Off of Clark. Is not paved. Would that be the only non-paved road?
Bradley Road is. Or two long day.
Um. McMullen Drive would be another. It's not paid. Please have. Yeah, so that we can formulate a structured, persistent response on road issues. Um, can we address at our next meeting as an agenda item? What our priority will be, when when patching will start, what's been confirmed, um.
And have all of those things that you just mentioned been considered in your, uh, finance and infrastructure committee?
Not all of them.
Has, has Birmingham ever been addressed before that you're aware of?
It's never come off my priorities. It's been great, but I might have to end here.
Yes. But I'm sorry for the change.
And after I got the call, I remember it's, it's not in, I've seen a lot worse conditions, but. After a rain, the residents that I talked to, they specifically said when it's wet, it's it's worse.
It's twenty May. So.
Just two.
We'll start tomorrow morning.
Oh, excellent.
I'm starting to show me the, our main drags, main street, Rockland Road, uh. Donald's here tomorrow. I don't suspect he's down tomorrow, but it will be, uh, it's been done in two, two or three days. Uh, and we are paving under the request of finance and sharper. We are paving the upper portion of Hillcrest. So the plain avenue to heart tree portion of Hillcrest is that has been a very. Poor street, uh, for a number of years now.
Been in bad condition for a long period of time.
Something that is the baking, uh, uh, wood portion of our patch.
Is it keeping up with there and?
It'll be pulverized and painted, yes.
Okay, and then new pavement put down.
Thank you.
Some of the streets, I know we've done with an issue recently on a road that had not. We were out of time and the weather last year. Those types of streets, once your major contractor is gone, are you gonna continue?
So.
Do they say that?
If you want to leave this, uh, we, we currently have fifty thousand for patching. Uh, we've spent around five to six, we'll say, in cold patch, uh, over there. Uh, we're gonna stop the contractor at thirty thousand. Uh, and then with the remaining, we will then go around and decide.
It'll go as far as you're gonna.
I think so, as far as you can. And we will, we will definitely address streets that get missed last year or shouldn't say missed, but but getting uncovered last year. Uh, we'll address those first in hopes that the unknowns that we get addressed last year are are going to be better off.
Thinking solely and selfishly. Um, in time for our next meeting. Would it be possible for your department to just itemize road or the main site grass here, shade it out and let it go to the yard?
For the patching.
For the patching.
We're now, we're doing Main Street, we're doing the Plain Avenue. We're doing our portion of the five seventy five. They'll be doing orser. Rockland Road and if we can get to the lower half of Hillcrest. Uh, we're going to patch it in the upper half. Uh, if if the thirty thousand can get us on Hillcrest, then great. If not, that is the street that we can close off and move. The reason we bring in a contractor.
Is this Tom, the contractor?
That is.
That's true, yeah.
Uh, the reason we bring in a contractor for those larger roads is that we don't have through enough to do flagging, raking, trucking and and work. Uh, so we can then just kind of shut off and then watch on the on the side streets falling. Which are smaller through, we don't fire a flag into this.
Excellent. Thank you for that. That's gonna be helpful.
Also, I'd like to say, uh, I was contacted by the residents of Paterno on the Rockland Road. And they're very appreciative about the signs you guys put up yesterday. Um, it's, yeah, it's great. Looks good. Takes a couple extra minutes, but it's well worth it for everybody's safety. So thank you for that, Jed.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the town C A O for, uh, I've required or I've asked her to check. The cemetery is looking at digitizing, putting this, the cemetery, the lots and everything in computers. So that we don't have to go with map books anymore. And the C A O has been very gracious in contacting. Uh, let's, for example, mirror machine, find their, whether what they've got, so on and so forth. So I'd just like to thank you for, for helping me out. We did find a system.
Anyone else? I'm gonna thank somebody. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, okay, so if we can't move.
Both can do a journey worship.
Second.
I see there's a seven P M. And, uh, that'll never happen. Seven, Eastern time.
I don't know. I think we were quite quick on laughing. I'll tell you, I'll tell you what, uh, helps me that lonely when we don't get pot talk, we're talking cross bonds.
We have a toast session.
Everybody's doing a brand new motion. It's time, baby, do it.